Good morning.
It's good to see everybody this morning. Thank you for participating in your county government. Since we had live singing last meeting, I invited Roger Miller to be here today, the country singer. And since he couldn't be here, he sent along a video and he said to dedicate this to Post War Commissioner Tony Crow. Thanks for getting on your seats. Watch. We're waiting on Todd, too, huh?
No, I think he made it right. Todd off.
All right, means I need to look.
Technical difficulties.
Is he serious?
I don't know, there's no true or fake.
Maybe we just have to grow some.
No true or fake.
There you go.
I can get it started again.
Like a note, sure statement, and this is especially for those of you who wake up in the mornings looking for something to be unhappy about.
So I am happy to call this January 24, 2017 Board Commissioners Meeting to order. We're glad to have City Councilman Jimmy Henson here and special guests such as Kelly Tomstock and Mark Lethbridge, because they're gonna bring us water, so they're very special. And remember to turn your phones off. If I could ask Lieutenant Daniels to bring the citizen's sign-in sheet, please. The January 10th, I'm sorry, I'm so delighted today to have with us Ms. Sharon White, who's the Chairwoman for the Paulding County Women's Republican Party. And Sharon, thank you for taking time out of your day to come and lead us in prayer.
I don't know if I can function after that song. I gotta talk to my heavenly Father. Thank you for standing. Good morning, everybody. Let's just go to the Lord in prayer. Father God, we just bless you this morning. We thank you, Lord, this is another day that you have made. We will rejoice and we shall be glad in it. Father, we thank you that you have created all things and for your pleasure they were created. So we thank you that today this meeting is gonna bring you praise and pleasure. The things that will be said and done, the hearts that will speak out and just come forth with verbiage, Lord, we just thank you right now that you were just blessed. Father, we know that your word says that in the multitude of councilors there is wisdom. So Father, we ask you today, right now, to let Jesus be wisdom, righteousness, sanctification, and redemption in us in this place. We ask you to bless these council members, so we call them mighty men of God. We thank you, Lord, that they're taking on things that pertain to this county and to our lives. And Father, we just thank you for each and every person that's in this room this morning. Father, we just send forth the praise of thanksgiving and glory and honor to you, Lord. We just thank you for what you're gonna do today. All these blessings we ask to Christ's name. Amen. May we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
The minutes from the January 10th, 2017 work session and regular meetings minutes are available for review. We have a video to show this morning under a segment that we're calling Community, Community Corner. And it's about the great things going on in Paulding County. We'll roll that now.
My name is Kiwi Dixon and I'm the Executive Director here at the Paulding County Boys and Girls Club. Our vision is that ninety percent of youth who walk through the doors, graduate on fine, with a plan for a future, adopt a healthy lifestyle, and give back to the community. At our club, we have fifty-one percent boys and forty-nine percent girls. We have a hundred percent graduation rate. Last year, the Paulding County Boys and Girls Club had twelve members to go to college. This year, the Boys and Girls Club has signed up over two-hundred-and-forty-five members. ADA, which is our average daily attendance, is a hundred-and-ten students per day. On an average day at the Boys and Girls Club, the first thing that we would do as the young people as they walk through our doors is greet them with a smile, offer very prestigious snack time, and we get ready for one of our most important times of the day, which is our power hour. That is specifically our homework time. After that, we go into different programming areas. Our learning center, we have computers and computer labs. We also have health and PE, and we have arts and crafts, and we have social recreation. For more information, you can contact us at (678) 363-8570. Or you can go on our website at www.bdcma.org. Welcome to the Boys and Girls Club, with great futures to start here.
And we are proud and happy to have with us Kiwi Dixon this morning. And I want to tell you a couple of things about him. He graduated in 1992 from Delta State University, which is in Mississippi, and received a Bachelor's Degree in Business Management. He was an international pro basketball player. And when I met him, he had just stepped down from that and decided to come to Paulding County and be the founding Executive Director of the Boys and Girls Club, where he's been in service for twenty years. He received the Paulding County Chamber of Commerce, and their president is here, Stacy. And the Citizen of the Year in 2015. He's dedicated his life certainly to the mission of building great futures. Kiwi, you want him to come up to the podium and say something, or if you just want us to give you a round of applause, that's good, too.
Basically, I would like to thank you for having me here in representation of all of our students and our families here in Paulding County. It has really been a blessing for me to be here. I tell people all the time, you know, the work that goes in and all of the, you know, the hard knocks of trying to make a difference and trying to elevate, educate, and expose you to a better understanding of 21st century skills and, you know, just how to be a better person. So with me being here over the last twenty years, you know, I can honestly say that, you know, it's just, I'm just a vessel. Our team is a vessel. And each and every day, we just do the best we can with what we have to make a difference. So, you know, my expectations for my students are high, and they can meet us halfway and understand that through our tactic of leadership, our healthy lifestyle, and academic success, they can be a vital part of it. So I thank each and every one of you in some form or fashion. You've all had a hand on the Boys and Girls Club, whether it's, you know, giving funding or even talking about what we do. So we need all the exposure to, you know, make sure that the county knows and families and the kids that need us the most have an opportunity to have a safe haven to come to. So thank you very much, I appreciate it.
About the state, the Boys and Girls Club still takes donations? It's a pleasure to have our Post War Commissioner Ron Davis take part in announcement and time of recognition this morning. So turn around to Ron.
Thanks, Dave. Last meeting, the Chairman, on behalf of the Board, announced that we were reaffirming the Department Heads and thanked them for their service. And I guess it was later that afternoon, two things occurred to me. One was that a little recognition would be appropriate. And two is that a lot of the citizens don't see all of our Department Heads, because some of them fly under the radar or sit behind the scenes a little more than others. So we're gonna, we're gonna bring them up here in front of you. So Tabitha's smiling at me, because she loves this. Tabitha Pollard is our Finance Director. Come on up. I'm serious. Everybody's gonna join Tabitha. Tabitha loves being out in front of everybody. You guys just come up when I call you. And this is supposed to be a, I think this is a full list, and if it's not, please don't get angry at me. Brian Acker is Human Resources.
Brian's out today.
Brian, some may not be here. Tim Axerson is Fleet Maintenance. Bruce Coyle, County Engineering. Scott Green, DOT. Deidra Holden, Election Supervisor. Michael Justice, Parks and Rec. Mike Laird, Building Maintenance. Ann Littman, Community Development. Will Lyons, IT. David Mumford, 911. Joey Helfrey, Fire Chief and EMA Director. Pat Tibbetts is our County Clerk and Executive Assistant to the Board. Sherry Waddell is Library Coordinator. Frank Baker, Court Administrator. James Stokes is Chief Appraiser. And then we have one department that, we have an acting head of the, the Marshal Bureau is overseen by Major Leanne Mahone, and she relies heavily on Eileen Culberson for Animal Control part of that. So to all of you, on behalf of this Board, I'd just say thank you for your service. Please, if you guys, if you don't know this, they run their departments, but they also have a unique opportunity of dealing with the Commissioners. And I'll give you an example. I can guarantee that there's not an expert on traffic flow on this Board, but every one of us has taken at least five times the greatest solution to traffic congestion since the invention of the car, to Scott Green. And he has, every time, found a way to say, "That is the dumbest idea," without actually saying it. So they have unique challenges in their job. So would you please join me in the board and recognize me?
How loud is your latest?
Yeah, you should have.
Do you want to introduce yourself?
Lori Ashmore is not on this list, I'm sorry.
She is not, she is not in front.
But still, thank you all of you for the love of the park, Lori. Thank you, Lord.
Thanks, Ron. I don't think you have it on your, on your agendas, but I've got some late Christmas presents here. I just got a word late. What I'll do for boots. Cody?
Thank you.
Can you see? Does this read "gifting"?
I said, "Well, my David Carver."
Hold it up, literally, sit it. Oh, man, that's great.
Has my name on it, so I won't forget who I am.
So if y'all come back to the seven o'clock meeting, we'll have a load of uniform. If there are any taxpayers that are concerned about the source of the funding, it's off Dave Carmichael's car.
You're missing all the fun.
Now, the Board Commissioners would like to present the Public Safety Appreciation Award to Katie Shipman, Adoption Coordinator with Animal Control. So Katie, if you'd come up, and Leanne's already here.
Actually, it's gonna be too cold. Not only, yeah, definitely go up. Not only to recognize Katie for her great accomplishments, but we're going to get Eileen to come before the podium today, so she's gonna get here for the first time.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Board Commissioners, in October of 2014, you created the position of Adoption Rescue Coordinator for our department. I personally want to thank you for this. The decision to hire Katie for this position was an easy one. Katie had been working in the rescue field for several years. Her love and compassion for the animals of this county is very apparent. Katie contacts rescue groups to help place the shelter animals and also assist the public in rehoming their own pets. She also visits the local schools and helps to educate the children about being responsible pet owners. Katie is also responsible for outside adoption events. In 2015, 2016, one thousand six animals went to rescues. And the euthanasia numbers dropped from five-hundred-and-twenty-three in 2014 to three-hundred-and-twenty-eight in 2016. This is greatly due to Katie's tireless work and dedication to Paulding County Animal Control and the animals of this county. Thank you, Katie, for all that you do. You are very deserving of this award.
Let me just read this. Public Safety Appreciation Award. This award is awarded to Katie Shipman in recognition of outstanding service to her community, presented by the Paulding County Board Commissioners. Great work, Katie, where all the commissioners are signing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She did it all.
Someone had her teeth.
Someone had to start.
The Board Commissioners would like to honor K9 Grepp, and we will do that with the help of Sergeant Ashley Henson.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Miss Skipper, Department Heads, citizens, I appreciate this opportunity to come before you guys today. And I appreciate the opportunity that you're giving us to honor Grepp. K9 Grepp was a member of our K9 Division. He was born March 26, 2003, and he passed January 6, 2017. I got Grepp in December of 2004. I was just a couple of years in at the Sheriff's Office. Sheriff Gudge was still in K9, he was my supervisor. And I got the opportunity to be a K9 handler. Something I never really thought about before. The sheriff came to me and asked me if it was something I was interested in, and obviously I was, and it was just an awesome opportunity. Grepp worked from December of '04 to January of 2012. And when I got, with me, and when I got promoted and started doing all the public information stuff, he moved to Deputy Ricky Waters. Deputy Waters had him from January 2012 to October of '23, 2013, where he retired. Grepp was one of those dogs, now, I can probably venture a guess that every single person in this room has had a pet at some point in their life, and knows what that kind of bond is, and knows what kind of love you have for a pet. But these guys were not pets. These guys were family members. I didn't have kids at the time, and for my wife and I, this was our first kid. Grepp was, he was just an awesome dog. He had, I tell you, if he could have, if he could have talked, we could have put Glenn Burns out of a job. Now, that kinda, it might sound funny, but that dog could tell when we were about to have a storm. It was, and it was always in the middle of the night, he would always start this, this little yelpie, and if the sheriff was here, his dog, Honda, his second dog, was brothers with Grepp. And they both had this uncanny ability to tell the weather. And it was, it was good to know that the weather was coming, but it was not so good at three o'clock in the morning. We spend, and this is Lieutenant Billy Hurst, he is the Supervisor of the K9 Division, and he can attest, we spend more time with these dogs than we do with our own families. You think about it. We're at work with them every day, we're at home with them every day, on our off days. And so you build a pretty significant bond with these dogs. For the sheriff and the county to allocate resources to continue this program is just, is awesome, because they do so many things. Not only do they find narcotics and they find bad guys, but they're a good community resource for outreach. There's no telling how many demos that Lieutenant Hurst and his guys do on a daily basis. It's a way to bridge the gap between the community and law enforcement, because everybody loves a dog. And those that are scared of these dogs, it's, a lot of people think that these dogs are mean and that we train them to be ugly. We don't. It's like a light switch. These dogs work for two things and two things only. They work for the love and praise of their handler, and they work for a toy. And I wish I was thought and had the ability to bring a toy. But it's just a little squeaky toy, and that's their everything. That's their Disney World, that's their Christmas morning, that's everything to these dogs, the love and the praise, and these, and these toys. I can remember Grepp's first narcotic seizure. I was young, I was new. It was actually during the time of Hurricane Katrina, at the time the sheriff was, at the time he was our Supervisor, where he was going to New Orleans to help with all the hurricane stuff that had gone on with Hurricane Katrina. And I was the only handler in the county at the time. And I got a call from our Drug Task Force, and they said, "We need you over here, we gotta, you know, we know this guy's got drugs." So I was searching the car, and I'm nervous, and the dog jumps up in the back of the truck, and he starts rooting around with this aerosol can. I thought, "Oh, God, I'm fixing that. I'm fixing to screw up." And lo and behold, there was four ounces of meth in an aerosol can that had a false compartment in it, and you could screw it off, and there was the drugs inside. So one of the things that the sheriff always told me, he said, "Trust your dog." And I guarantee you, and I think Billy could probably say the same thing, trusting your dog has kept us alive and kept us safe, because those dogs know. I mean, it's so weird. They can tell when somebody's hiding in the woods or hiding somewhere. They know, they change. And so I appreciate everything that Grepp did for me, and the love that he gave me and my family. He was an awesome dog. He, he really helped me become the person that I am today. So I appreciate you guys, not necessarily you guys per se, but the county and the sheriff for continuing to finance this program, because it really is an acid and earth meeting. No disrespect to you.
This is great.
Thank you, guys, this is our Chairman, Sharon, I appreciate it. And we do have a memorial out behind the Sheriff's Office, where we have all of our dogs that have passed. And hopefully, when we get our new facility, we'll be able to transition that over to our new building. So thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, everyone. Just real quick, Mr. Chairman, other members of the Board, thank you again. Thank you for taking the time to recognize K9 Grepp's service. Sergeant Henson and K9 Grepp were an amazing team. They accomplished really great things together as a team for, what, nearly eight years together? These dogs are dual-purpose. They're trained and certified in two different areas, drug detection and patrol. And they're really good at all of those things. They've done a great job for us in combating the drug problem in the county and tracking fleeing suspects. What these suspects don't understand is that these dogs' favorite game to play is hide and go seek. And they're pretty darn good at it. But not only that, it's the over a hundred public K9 demonstrations that we do throughout the year in the county, and the positive impact that these dogs have on our youth is truly amazing. And to have you guys recognize them and us, see that the leadership of Paulding County truly cares about our dogs the way that we do, is very impressive. So thank you, thank you very much.
We have no-bid awards, reports from committees and departments. We're very glad to have Mary Carol Shetfield from the Extension Department with us this morning for a report. LPA 24.
That's right, LPA 24. Good morning, and thank you for your continued support of our UGA, Paulding County Extension Program. We're kind of a unique, shared operation, we're funded jointly through the university, the Board of Commissioners, and also the Paulding County School District. So I like to come and kind of give you an update each year of the things that we've accomplished. And January is a good time to kind of look back on the previous year. So I believe that Ms. Pat handed you guys a copy of our annual report, and I just want to highlight a few of the things that happened this year. And our annual report probably doesn't even tell the whole story, but it is a good way for me to brag about some of the things that my staff and I have been able to accomplish this year, and my volunteers. So I want to start out talking about some of my volunteers. I have a wonderful group of master gardeners, about thirty-two folks who are trained, and they volunteer their time with our county. They give people advice, they teach classes on gardening and water conservation, they work with youth programs, and they also raise money for a local scholarship. They gave a thousand dollars to a local UGA, a local student who attends UGA last year. They also, every year, produce vegetables in their garden. We're looking at how we're gonna alter that this year, because we're gonna have to construction a garland, which we're very excited about and grateful, because we know it's progress, but it's gonna remove our garden. But we did produce about a thousand pounds of fresh produce last year for helping hand food bank. And I also want to brag about our 4-H program. In Paulding County, people don't necessarily think about 4-H, I think people think about Charlotte's Web, and small farm communities might think about 4-H. But we've really adapted 4-H in Paulding County, and I like to say that we're not just pigs and chickens anymore, but we do pigs and chickens, too. But that's not all we do. This year, we've continued our STEM focus, and we brought STEM programming into our school district for third through fourth graders, which is not, that's not our typical grade level that we work in. We met with more than three thousand third and fourth grade students to provide some STEM help to those teachers, because a lot of those teachers aren't comfortable with science lessons, but we brought those science lessons to them to help. We also have more than twenty-five hundred 4-Hers in fifth through twelfth grade, and in a couple of weeks, we're gonna take about forty-five fifth and sixth graders to our public speaking contest in Rome. And then in a few more weeks, we'll take about forty senior, junior and senior 4-Hers, seventh through twelfth graders, to Rocky Eagle for a weekend-long public speaking contest. And some fun, they'll have a little fun, but they get to compete, and it's a whole lot of fun. In addition to those programs, we've had a lot of success with our judging teams this year. We have a long history of successful judging teams, we're really proud. Our poultry judging team placed first at district and fifth at state. Our four-year judging team placed second at district and fifth at state. And our food challenge team placed first in the state, and they went on to the national competition at the Dallas, Texas State Fair, and they placed third in the nation. So it was a very exciting year for some youth in our program. And we also have three shooting sports education teams. We're all about teaching kids to be safe and to have fun while they're doing some competitive shooting. We have a shotgun team, a DVD team, and an archery team. And a lot of kids, about sixty kids, participate across those teams. And there is a great demand for that in our county, more demand than we can even meet. But we are grateful for the wonderful volunteers who helped us conduct that program, because we couldn't do it without them. We met with more than 3,000 3rd and 4th grade students to provide some STEM help to those teachers, because a lot of those teachers aren't comfortable with science lessons, but we brought those science lessons to them to help. We also have more than 2,500 4-Hers in 5th through 12th grade, and in a couple of weeks, we're gonna take about 45 5th and 6th graders to our public speaking contest in Rome. And then, in a few more weeks, we'll take about 40 senior, junior and senior 4-Hers, 7th through 12th graders, to Rocky Eagle for a weekend-long public speaking contest. And some fun, they'll have a little fun, but they get to compete, and it's a whole lot of fun. In addition to those programs, we've had a lot of success with our judging teams this year. We have a long history of successful judging teams, we're really proud. Our agriculture judging team placed first at district and fifth at state. Our forestry judging team placed second at district and fifth at state. And our food challenge team placed first in the state, and they went on to the national competition at the Dallas, Texas State Fair, and they placed third in the nation. So, it was a very exciting year for some youth in our program. And we also have three shooting sports education teams. We're all about teaching kids to be safe, and to have them while they're doing some competitive shooting. We have a shotgun team, a DVD team, and an archery team. And a lot of kids, about 60 kids, participate across those teams. And there is a great demand for that in our county, more demand than we can even meet. But we are grateful for the wonderful volunteers who helped us conduct that program, because we couldn't do it without them. We don't have a family consumer's finance agent in our program, in our county. You can see that we've been teaming with a nearby agent, and some, actually multiple nearby agents, to help people and answer their questions, but also to provide some programming. And I'm teaming up with our HR department. We did a freezer meals program in December, and we're gonna do a gardening class in March that's aimed at our county employees as a lunch and learn. And we're also gonna do a Walk Georgia kickoff in April to kind of do a little wellness with our county employees. Anybody else who's interested, participate, we'd love for them to sign up for Walk Georgia. And I'm the Agriculture and Natural Resources Agent, and every year I come to you and tell you that, you know, water conservation is not on everybody's mind, but this year, it was. And so, we continue to do the work of water conservation education, not only with youth but with adults, through gardening programs, and with my farmers, through their professional organizations. We provided 74 programs and events this year, aimed at helping people learn more about water conservation and water quality. And upcoming, we'll have our Spring 4 Paulding, which is our annual series of programs, starting in February and running into March. Lots of programs on gardening topics, because that's of general interest. And we'll probably also be talking a lot about water conservation, because that's gonna be on people's minds. And even though we've had some rainfall, it's not been enough, we're not there yet, and it seems like it's Easter famine. So, I really appreciate the time to come and talk to you guys today, and I really appreciate your continued support of our program in the county.
Now, we have an update on our Richland Creek reservoir from Brandon Collins, Mr. Kelly Comstock, Kelly, which will be here.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to be here this morning to be able to give you an update on the Richland Creek Water Supply Program. Want to focus on some significant construction activity that's taken place over the past quarter in three primary areas. The water treatment plant, which is located, as you can see, up here off of 61. The future dam location that's located here. And then also the raw water pipeline that goes from where the reservoir will be located all the way up to the Etowah River. At the water treatment plant, we finished the improvements on Highway 61, so now we have turn lanes and acceleration and deceleration lanes in and out of the plant entrance. So that makes all of the construction activity much safer in terms of this stretch of roadway. The contractor's been very busy installing all of the underground piping associated with the water plant, as well as the electrical and control service that will serve all of these different facilities. And they've begun placing foundations at the administration building, the maintenance building, and some of the process treatment buildings. They also poured their first large pour at the gravity thickener, which you can see there. Got a brief video here that also shows. So here they're pouring concrete for the gravity thickener, and this is one of the process tanks that's used to handle the residuals that are generated with the water treatment plant. Pretty common configuration where they have a concrete pumper truck that pumps the concrete to the actual pour location. You can see off in the distance the entrance road that comes off of Highway 61, as well as the location of the large clear well that'll be down here, and that's a large concrete tank that holds the finished water. You can see across the rest of the site, they've started work on some of the other facilities. Once again, right now focused on all of the underslap piping and stuff that goes under the structures. And over the next six months, we're really gonna see a lot of concrete placed as all of these structures come up out of the ground. This overall shot shows the location of the administration building that'll be here, the chemical building that'll be here, the gravity thickener that's down here, the DAF and the filter building that's here, and the clear well location. The contractor, PC Construction, has 75 workers on site at this point, and that will continue to ramp up as all of their subcontractors and specialty trades move in as the project continues. At the dam itself, there's been significant increase in earthmoving activities. The dam will use about 350,000 cubic yards of soil. They've placed about 500,000 cubic yards of soil. There's a significant amount of erosion control that's being done out at the site, because Richland Creek runs right through the center of the dam, so here you can see some of the silt fence and erosion ponds that are set up. They're undercutting the bedrock at the left abutment, which is the left side of the dam. They're excavating down to that bedrock, and they're going to start drought injection next month in February. And then at the bottom of the dam, they've actually reached the elevation of where the outlet tower will be located, so they're forming up the foundation for this. So this will rise up 100 feet in the air, and then there'll be an outlet pipe, a 60-inch diameter pipe that'll run through the location of the dam. And to show you the overall scale of what's going on, as I mentioned, 350,000 cubic yards of soil will be placed. A typical dump truck will hold about 10 cubic yards, so that's 350,000 dump trucks. So that's a lot of material. The contractor, Brad Cole, has 62 pieces of bench machinery out on site, and have about 80 people working. So it's a very, very large endeavor that's taking place, and they're doing a great job. They're slightly ahead of schedule, which is really nice. Here you can see we're sort of turning, and this, you'll be able to see the future location of the entire dam. It'll basically span across here, all the way down, and tie into this left abutment that's here. So this is where all of the placement will take place. The current, Richland Creek flows through the center of the site. They created a diversion ditch that's lined, that allows all the water to flow through this construction area without having a lot of impact from the runoff from the storm events. Here you can see the site itself, the diversion channel, as I mentioned, here, that's located here. Here's the location of the outlet tower, that's located right here. They'll be installing a pipeline. This is the, sort of the finished grade here, so this whole pool area will continue to get backfill. So, over the next six months, you'll see this take a much more of a defined shape in terms of, in terms of what the dam will look like. At the raw water pipeline, the county successfully acquired all of the easements associated with the pipelines, so the county now owns all the property from the dam all the way back to the river site. The contractor, Garnet Construction, has installed 9,300 diameter feeder pipeline, which is just over half of the distance. They started down at the reservoir site itself and have gone up just past Highway 61. Last week, they completed the boring underneath Highway 61, so they're right about there with the pipeline. They cleared the rest of the easement and done all of the geotechnical work associated with the remaining part of the easement, and they've also mobilized to their second boring, which is on Old Alabama Road. And what a boring is, is basically, they come in and they drill underneath the roadway, basically tunnel underneath the roadway, so they don't have to open cut the roadway. And they put a, in this case, a 60-inch diameter casing, and then the 48-inch pipe fits underneath that. And you can see the typical installation that's taking place of the pipeline down the easement that's owned by the county. And then ultimately, after it's done, everything's backfilled, graded, erosion control established, and then there are a series of air release valves and drainage structures that are located that the county has to be able to maintain the line. In terms of planned future activity coming to the board, there are two minor contract modifications that we came to do today. And then ultimately, there are three remaining projects that will need to be awarded. All of these are being competitively bid. One is a small booster pump station that's gonna be located here near the Watson Complex. The other, the largest project, is the finished water pipeline that'll convey the water from the reservoir site in the water treatment plant all the way down here to the Watson Complex. And then the other is a small road that ultimately will connect the water treatment plant to the dam. We anticipate all of these contracts to come before you in the May to June timeframe, and that they'll all begin construction shortly after that. And we're still tracking for all projects to be complete in 2019, so everything's still on schedule. For more information, please go to www.rcrwater.com. I did want to mention that we did a refresh of the website, because there's a lot of new construction activity and construction photos. So please stop by and check it out and take a look at what's going on. We've also been trying to actively push some notifications out on Facebook, so that people that follow our Facebook page can see day-to-day activity that's taking place. And you can sign up via the website as well. Any questions? Okay, thank you for the opportunity.
Your bodyguard have anything to say this morning?
No, sir, he's doing well.
We have no citizens who have signed up to speak on agenda items. Under consent agenda, we have one item. Action to adopt Resolution 1703, authorizing the chairman and finance director to designate signers with financial institutions in accordance with financial internal controls. We need the Commissioners to like to leave that into the regular agenda. Under old business. Action to adopt Resolution 1701, the Resolution memorializing the Paulding County Board of Commissioners' mission, vision and value statement, was tabled from a meeting on January 10.
Either one, we're not running version four, so.
Smaller print there.
Now, the Commissioners have this version in front of them, which is the last version that we've listed now. Can I put some in the back?
Resolution 1701, whereas as leaders of Paulding County Board of Commissioners envision certain ideals and standards for itself and its work for its citizens, whereas among these standards and goals, we're following them of the foremost importance. Unity is a key ingredient to success. Progress is achieved through teamwork. Embrace and drive change each and every week. Build open and honest relationships with and through communication, and do more with less to strive to conserve the taxpayers' dollars. Whereas, in order to remain cognizant of these ideals and values, the Paulding County Board of Commissioners is desirous of adopting a mission, vision and value statement for itself. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Paulding County Board of Commissioners approves and adopts the following mission, vision and value statement as an embodiment of the ideals and standards by which it wishes to govern itself and the citizenry in upcoming years. Number one, mission, with unity and purpose, the Board of Commissioners and its staff will work to enhance citizens' quality of life by maximizing resources to make Paulding County a better place to live, work and play. Number two, vision, the Paulding County Board of Commissioners will operate as an effective and efficient governing body on behalf of all the citizens of Paulding County to assist in making Paulding County the preeminent place in the Atlanta metropolitan area to live, work and play. Take that, cop killer. And values, Paulding County, Georgia is a community that is unique in the Atlanta metropolitan area in its opportunities, diverse citizenry, and recreational programs, but most of all in its heart. Paulding County Board of Commissioners will honor these values. Honesty, equality and openness in government. E, excellence in working with all levels of government and supporting citizen involvement. A, accountability in order to ensure financial and personal integrity. And R, respect within the county government and to our citizens. And T, for teamwork and transparency in order to promote quality decision-making. Is there any additional discussion on the mission values? We did have a meeting last Thursday where about 10 or 12 citizens came in this room, and there were some emails that were received that were also shared, so we did get some good citizen input, and thank you for that.
Yeah, and that was very helpful in the final version.
Under new business, discuss action to authorize the chairman to enter an agreement with Colonial Pipeline Company in the amount of $1,880,000 for engineering inspection, project management, and construction services concerning protection of their facilities with the Picketts Mill Creek Bridge Replacement Project.
All right, thank you for letting me bring you this item. As you know, we've awarded the bridge project, the Picketts Mill and Picketts Creek on Dallas Southport Highway, and we're preparing to break ground next month. We have one final agreement to get into place, so the utility work can advance on that project. And this is what Colonial Pipeline has mentioned. Just to give you a little background, this is a large ticket item. Colonial Pipeline has held an easement crossing Dallas Southport Highway since 1962, where they abut up to the right of way on either side of our project. And our project will be expanding the road quite a bit, as we lead into the new bridges, which are gonna be wider and shifted off the existing alignment. And where we are on Colonial Pipeline's property, we have to make provisions to extend the protections that they already have in the road right of way. So this is an extension of the encasement facilities and things that protect their line from damage in an area where a lot of other people are working, which is other utility companies, power companies and things like that drilling and boring. Right now, there's some boring going on right now, and this is very important to protect the integrity of the pipeline. Some bad things happen when mistakes are made, and in this high activity area, that's really important for them to be able to protect their facilities going forward. There are three petroleum lines, 10, 12 and 60-inch lines crossing this area, so we actually are dealing with three separate lines owned by Colonial, all carrying, I believe, petroleum products of various types. Protection includes a pretty expensive and glorious process of digging up the line and jacketing the line with concrete and steel or both, depending on the size of the line. And a lot of supervision, a lot of safety procedures have to be followed to make sure this is done safely, protect properly, protect the lives of the workers and other people working in the right of way down the road. We've looked at other options, of course, since it's over $1 million, even building a bridge over their line, and nothing seems to be feasible or any substantial savings over what would be the normal process just to continue the type of facility protection they have. This is not a moneymaker for them, utilities just rather not have to mess with their line. They are entitled to reimbursement since they're on their property. So this agreement is under a reimbursement basis for actual costs. It's all subject to open book accounting, accounting for a final audit for three years for final payment. Just looking at it, I think it's reasonable, they've got it well documented, designed and finished, and they're preparing to bid this out, so I have no issues with the agreement. I would suspect it is on the high side, or it's the worst-case estimate, and I certainly hope we come in lower than this. In my experience, working with four or five agreements with Colonial, with the state in the past years, this is pretty typical, the cost you see working around the pipeline is this nature. So if there's nothing I can add to that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you have. And this would be sploshed on it as part of the project cost, but it would be over and above the bid amount we've already awarded, separate from the construction bid.
We had quite a bit of backup material that you sent us, so thank you, covered it pretty well. But part of the backup material, letter C talks about the total estimated cost being the $1,880,000. It discusses if it goes over that, then we'll be obligated to pay the overage. Might expand on that a little bit.
Well, it is actual cost reimbursement based on the design they have today and based on the conditions they're aware of. There's always a possibility, I don't think it's a high possibility, that they get, it's something unforeseen. This is a competitive bid, they have not already bid yet. So as they go out to the market and take prices for this work, there is a chance the prices could come in higher. So, like anything we bid out, sometimes there's inflation that is more than expected. So we would have to come back to you for a change in this agreement if that's the case. But right now, I don't foresee that happening. That's about it, I was about to answer, any other concerns?
All right, thank you so much.
New business number two, discuss action to approve change order number two for C-Mark Services, the Richland Creek Reservoir Water Treatment Plant, Edweller Pump Station, and Reservoir Pump Station Project in the amount of $1,606,701.41. Mr. Comstock, and Ms. Ashen.
Commissioners, this is associated with the water treatment plant and pump stations contract, where PC Construction is the C-Mark contractor, which is a construction manager at risk. They establish a guaranteed maximum price associated with their, with their project associated with the scope, and these represent three different items that have come up that are essentially changes from that, that scope. So, under situations where there's a change, where the scope has not changed, then there's no course of action for them to request additional funds. These were changes that were made that do warrant additional funds, and so there are three different items, and I'll go through each of those. Item one was the change to the access road location going from Old Alabama Road over to where-
to where the pump station is located here on the Etta River. The GMP was originally established based on the assumption that the access road would follow the location of the rawwater pipeline, which is shown in yellow here, obviously a direct straight shot. When we negotiated with the property owner, they did not want a road going through that location because they used this area for grazing for their cattle, and they felt having a road bisecting their property would not allow them to have access to their entire property. So one of the stipulations for the purchase of the pump station site was that the county had to have a road against their property line. So whereas previously, within the guaranteed maximum price, the pipeline easement already would have been cleared, the grading already would have been done for the pipeline, we now have to run a new roadway essentially down, it's shown here in red, along the property line, so there's additional cost associated with that. The second item is a change to what are called variable frequency drives at the rawwater pumps. And a variable frequency drive is something you could consider to be like a dimmer switch, where you could turn the power up and down on a light, similar with pumps, you can ramp it up and down, versus constant speed pumps, which are more like a light switch, which is on and on. During the GMP development process, the original design had four BFDs, one for each of the 1,500 horsepower pumps. And during the GMP process, we were obviously trying to look for any type of cost savings possible, and the concept came up to potentially have two constant speed pumps and two variable speed pumps in order to save a substantial amount of money. And so when the GMP was established, that was the direction it was given to the C-Mar contractor. However, now that we've engaged the power company, they basically said, based on power system availability, it's a requirement to have BFDs, because BFDs have a lower draw, similar to a dimmer switch, and starting a 1,500 horsepower pump is a significant draw on the system. The pumps that are shown there are similar configurations called vertical turbine pumps. Those are 750 horsepower, and the pumps we're having are 1,500, so they're almost twice that size. So it's a significant load to the power system. So as a result, we need to put in all four BFDs within the pump station. So that's savings that we thought we could have as a deduct out of the GMP we're not able to realize. An additional, the third and final item on this, is additional foundation requirements at the rawwater pump station. The original design for the Etta River Pump Station had the pumps themselves located here remotely from the river. This is where the river's located. There would be an intake structure and sort of a tunnel going down to the pump station. Working with the C-Mar contractor and the designers, the decision was made, if we relocated that structure to the bank of the river, there would be potential cost savings, and it was significant. It was $4 million to be able to make that shift. However, at the new location, there's a challenge in the fact that before, this is all supported by auger cast piles that are basically long concrete tubes that go down and go to bedrock. Before, because the structure was surrounded by earth on all sides, you really only had to worry about the weight of the structure. But now that it's located on the bank and you're not surrounded by earth on all sides, you not only have to worry about the weight of the structure, but also what's known as lateral force for potentially pushing it over. So additional piling support is necessary at the new location. So we're not able to realize the full savings that we had originally anticipated when the GMP was put in place to be able to get the adequate foundations required for the pump station. So this is the breakdown of the cost of those three different items, and I apologize for this thing jumping around. The road is a little over $100,000, the BFDs are just shy of a half million dollars, and the additional deep piled foundations are just over a million. So the total is $1,006,060,000. We do have program contingencies within the $215 million budget set aside for these specific items. So the approval of this is still within the overall budget of the program, and we set that aside for these specific reasons. It's not uncommon for these type of issues to come up in a project early, because this is the point where we're going through all the submittals and shop drawings and getting everything lined up and lined up together. So we're making a recommendation to the board for this contract change. The C-Mar contractor, Brown-Paldwell, and the engineer, Arcadis, have worked over the past several months, really negotiating these numbers to make sure that the county's getting the absolute lowest cost possible, which we feel confident is making.
Any discussing questions? Mr. Constable, we appreciate you being here and appreciate you coming early. I speak for all commissioners and individual briefs with all of us, because there are a lot of questions involved, but we had the opportunity to ask them individually, so appreciate it.
Thank you.
New business item number three is discuss action to approve change order number three for design build services for the Richland Creek Reservoir Rawwater Pipeline for removal of an additional 7,000 cubic yards of blast rock in the amount of $550,000.
Yep, thanks Commissioner. And this is one of the other projects. Garni Construction is the design builder associated with this, and this is for constructing the rawwater pipeline that's going from the river to the reservoir itself. If you recall, this was awarded as a design build contract where they did the design and the construction. And the county at that point did not have the property because it had not been acquired. So we did not have access to the various parcels. So when their contract was established, there was an assumed amount of rock that was just basically said, this is an assumed quantity based on reasonable calculations, but really not having any understanding of what the underlying geology looks like, because no one was able to go on those properties and do the drilling required. So there was an assumption of 5,000 cubic yards of rock that was put in the contract. The contract was established where that was a unit price, where there was pay item per cubic yard. So if it went under or over, they would basically, it was a unit price. As the county now owns all the land and they've gone out and they've drilled it all, the quantities are actually higher. There are 12,000 yards instead of the 5,000. So there's an additional 7,000 cubic yards, which is $550,000. And now the contractors only paid, they have not removed all the rock yet. They're paid $75 a cubic yard for blasting, for removal, and for disposal. So if at the end of the project, it's only 11,500 yards, then that money stays with the county, obviously. And we feel confident that 12,000 is on the conservative side, and it would be no more than that based on the fact that we see in all the geological performance that this has done. Once again, this is coming out of the program contingency that's been set aside for these specific items, so this does not impact the overall program budget.
Comments, questions?
Yeah, I'd like to say, Kelly, I appreciate your work. Lori, I appreciate yours. Both of these items, the commissioners, either by conference call or in person, have met with Ms. Ashmore and Kelly together and went over this in detail a whole lot further than what we're doing this morning. We spent a lot of time on it. They've spent a lot of time on it. The Water Sewer Board met last Wednesday, and you went into very deep detail with them concerning, and they had a lot of great questions, and I happened to be in that meeting. And so I appreciate your time that you've spent with each of us, one at a time, individually at the Water Sewer Board. And I just can't thank you enough for the work that's been done on this project and how it's been done out front, how it's been brought to the public, the meetings that we've had, and I know that where I may have a meeting with you, and then I may sit in a Water Sewer Board meeting with you, and Lonnie the same, you've had to have five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 meetings of the same thing, and that's how we got to do it. But I appreciate it, and Lori, I can't thank you enough. I know you're in a little different situation. We kind of recognized that a minute ago when we recognized and didn't recognize. But I can't thank you enough. I can't thank you enough for when I call you on the weekends and on the holidays, no matter what's going on, when I call you, you answer, you respond, whether we find out it's your issues or not, you get me where I need to get to, and we get an answer, and I'm able to get it to the citizens. So I thank you for your work seven days a week. And I told her a few weeks ago, I said, I hope I don't have to talk to you this weekend. She said, me too. I appreciate it. Kelly, I can't thank you enough for how you kept us involved. It's been a great project from day one, day one, um, 10 years ago. And so thank you all very much for the project. Thank you for keeping us informed, and just thank you for your work.
Thank you very much.
I gotta say, I think K-9 grip would have known how much blast rock was out there. Plus, conclusion of our regular business, we do have executive session on litigation. However, Ms. Chris By...
Byrome.
Byrome, I'm sorry. Did you read Byrome right? It is here to speak on an on-attend item, and if I can entertain a motion, then we hear her before we go into executive session.
Motion to go ahead and hear says, which is the speaker?
Your second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pass the spot of. Thank you, dear.
No one gets that last name right. The worst I've ever heard it pronounced is "Broom," like you're starting a car. So it's Byrome. Anyway, I'd like to speak this morning on the meeting locations of the airport authority and the IBA. Now, we've talked about this before, and the airport authority says, well, we'd rather have it here because of security reasons and the metal detector and all that. Well, since you all voted to take the metal detector down downstairs, I see no reason why they have to continue having meetings up here. Number one, it costs taxpayer money to have the meetings here, and that money is not reimbursed to y'all, okay? Number two, I have no reason to go out to the airport personally, because I won't go on a plane, but it would be nice once a month to go out there just to kind of do a look, see, and see what's happening. So I would like that to be brought up again. Was thinking about talking to the airport authority about it, see if we can bring it up again, see if we can't get the meetings back at the airport where I think they should be, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do have litigation, executive session meeting, so we will entertain a motion to retire for the executive session.
Motion to go into executive session for litigation.
Second. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Means adjourned for executive session. I will call the regular work session meeting back to order, and there was no action taken on the, in the executive session. All we need then is a motion to...
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor say aye. That's means adjourned.